Before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to talk about our process. The meeting is being conducted in person as well as by phone and Zoom. This allows planning commission members and/or members of the public to participate in person or remotely. We will conduct a roll call to determine who is present throughout the meeting. We will call on individual planning commissioners to make sure that everyone has had a chance to be heard. We will conduct a similar process for comments from the public. Please wait until you are called on to offer comments and/or testimony. If you'd like to speak, please submit a request in the chat function and wait to be recognized. We would like to thank everyone for their understanding and patience. Minutes and audio recordings will be available on the planning commission website. Calling the meeting to order, I call this meeting of the Cook County Planning Commission to order. Today's date is October 29th, 2025, time is 4:01. The people joining me are your Cook County Planning Commissioners. We are volunteers that have been appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and make up a diverse cross-section of the community. Planning Commission will consider the following agenda items. Number one, final decision for file number 21725000151, PLNG, Moffitt Solar Facility. Two, public hearing for file number 2172400081, PLNG, Weston Personal Use Airstrip. And then work session, Transportation Safety Action Plan, ESAP update, potential code updates on definitions for the related dwelling unit, habitable space, and accessory structures. Next is a roll call for the planning commissioners. Kurt Jovanini here. Lucrenta Stack.
Here, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Take it, you can hear us.
Yes.
Michael Warren's here, Mr. Williamson here. Nor Odile. And we don't have Monte on the thing.
No.
Okay.
Just kidding.
Will staff please indicate for the record which absences are excused or unexcused?
All absences are excused.
Is there anyone in the meeting room or participating remotely that wishes to address any item not on the agenda? If attending remotely, please enter request to speak in the chat function. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll now meet the phone lines for those that are not staff or commissioners and move on to the first agenda item. We'll now move to the final decision, first agenda item, record number 21724000293, PLNG, conditional use application for proposed photovoltaic solar power generation facility located on property zone exclusive farm use, Zone EFU 3. Project is proposed to be a 320-acre site on a portion of property identified as tax map 1615, tax lot 1200. Are there any comments from commissioners regarding the final decision? Do you have any comments?
None.
None.
Questions, okay. So if none, Chair will sign that as the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Continuation of public hearing. So we'll now move to the second item on the agenda, continuation for the public hearing for record number 217250081, PLNG, Weston's Rock Ridge Ranch LLC. Phillips Weston owner applicant requested conditional use for private airstrip. Proposed private airstrip would be located 7837 Northwest Lone Pine Lane, Terrabon identified as 1407, tax lot 203. So at this point, I'm going to recuse myself and let Wes take over since I was not here for the original.
So applicable criteria, the hearing is being held pursuant to Cook County CCC 18.172. Planning Commission will be evaluating the request against the following applicable criteria. Title 18, Title 16, or Chapter 16, Chapter 160, the Cook County Comprehensive Plan, Oregon Administrative Rules, and Oregon Revised Standards. Ex parte contact conflict of interest. Do any of the commissioner members have a conflict of interest or bias to be exposed?
Nope.
No.
Anything online?
No.
No. Has any member of the commission had an ex parte contact with the applicant or any member of the public regarding the matter?
No.
No.
Commissioners should disclose if they visited the site and state on the record any observations and impressions for the site. Kurt Jovanini. Nope. Looky that.
No.
Michael Warren.
No.
Wes Williamson, no. Hunter, he's not here. Marle.
No.
Thank you. Are there members of the public in person or participating remotely who wish to challenge any member of the commission? That participating online, please enter in a request to speak using the chat feature. Hearing none, we'll move on. For opening for testimony, either in person or for those participating remotely, want to remind everyone that all testimony must be directed to the applicable approval criteria and standards. No person may testify without first receiving recognition from the hearing authority and stating their full name and address. No person may present irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. Please do not repeat testimony. The commission may set time limits on oral testimony if any member of the commission wished to impose a time limit or testimony. Set the time limit at five minutes. Staff, put a timer on the screen and alert the Chair when time is done. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence with enough detail to give the hearing authority and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with a detailed specificity to allow the hearing authority to respond to the issue recludes the applicant from seeking action for damages in Circuit Court. At the conclusion of the hearing pursuant to CCC 18.172.081, the Planning Commission may consider any request to continue the hearing or to leave the written record open. We'll start the hearing with staff presentation. After that, testimony from any federal, state, or local agencies will be allowed. We will then offer an opportunity for the applicant to speak. Individuals in support of the proposal will be heard and those neutral to the proposal, neither individuals opposed to the... Next, the individuals opposed to the proposal will be heard. The applicant can then offer rebuttal. We will now proceed with staff's presentation. Staff.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today we have the continuation, the continued hearing for the conditional use approval. Hannah, can you go to page five, please? At the initial hearing, County had received comments from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife earlier in the day and also had originally received comments from Central Oregon Land Watch. Central Oregon Land Watch then submitted a secondary comment saying that they had no objections further than... Let me scroll down to... Following the public hearing, staff had a meeting with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Go down to the next part where it talks about ODFW exhibit four. This, through the meeting with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, it was clarified that they are not stating outright objection to the use. The comments are intended to emphasize the importance of recognizing that there could be wildlife in the area. There are nesting sites identified on ODFW maps. They are within two miles on the Cook County Sensitive Bird Mapping, but nothing on the subject property. ODFW's comments really were meant to bring awareness for the planning commission and for the applicants of the nesting areas and that sometimes if there's active nesting, that the seasonal restrictions that the applicant had proposed, if there's an active nest of a sensitive bird, that that might need to be extended. One thing in speaking with them is that the regulatory agency for sensitive, for some of those protected birds, especially golden eagles, which we do have in our area, is that that's the US Fish and Wildlife, which are currently not operating. So having that communication with them to help identify if there's a site nearby to kind of do an inventory and just work with the USFWS, the US Fish and Wildlife, that there would just be communication around that and that they would work with that agency to identify if there are sites and then what to look for if there's nesting activities to be respectful of the wildlife and be able to have that be in concert with each other, not opposing, right? They also suggested that if there is additional fencing, which the applicant has testified that they were not doing additional fencing, that the property is already fenced, but if there's going to be fencing, that it's wildlife-friendly and that they were willing to, you know, help with communication and what that would look like. But again, there is no fencing being proposed at this point. It was mainly from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, the opportunity to make those comments, to have it in the record that, hey, we're here. These are things that would be beneficial to have considered for any application within the wildlife range. In the consulting with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, if you'll go to the conditions of approval, please. And this, this condition of approval would go back to compliance with the comprehensive plan as there are sensitive bird sites in the wildlife plan, in our comprehensive plan. So this is something that the planning commission could consider as a potential condition of approval. The applicant shall conduct a survey with a biologist, USFWS, ODFW, or other agency to locate any sensitive bird sites. If the US Fish and Wildlife Service is not available for consultation, the applicant shall document all attempted communications with and engage with state or regional agencies to identify an interim or an alternate pathway to coordinate on what that would look like. And then within 10 business days of that federal agency reopening, they would, to attempt to reengage with them. Kind of tricky when the regulatory agency is not operating. So this is an attempt to help the applicants comply with the comprehensive plan and the wildlife policy and still have their, the use as a mitigating factor for the use. Those were really, and there was one more spot in the staff report. I believe it is on page...
Real quick, this, though, we don't have in our packet, correct? We don't...
Correct. This is, this is just an updated finding from the staff report. On page six. So under 1816030, general conditions, sub one, limiting the manner in which the use is conducted, including restricting the time and activity may take place and restraints to minimize such environmental effect as noise, vibration, air pollution, flare, and odor. That first finding there, page six. Keep going. Next page. Seven. Why do you have a different patient number? I don't know. I don't know either. That's hot.
One, drag down.
That's not the right one. No, that, I think you were in the right one, but that wasn't the right... No, that's right. You have the right one up, but it's 1816030, general criteria.
It's on page seven.
Bottom of page seven. Is that right?
AJ. There we go. All right. So the planning commission may consider limiting operations to further minimize environmental effects. These are general conditions out of the conditional use criteria that as you go, as you hear any additional testimony, enter deliberations or want any more information of however direction you decide to go. This is the finding. So sub one and under 1816030 and the previous... The use is consistent with those goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, which apply are the two areas that we'll need. If you're going to add any other conditions or have any other... There could be further discussion around those two or the two that staff identified. Other than that, I have no further comments. If there's any questions.
Questions for staff?
So I'm not going to do the deliberations, but I do have a question.
Are you recused, Chair? Did you...
For deliberations?
You did.
Okay. So are you participating in that? I have a question.
Well, I wasn't going to... Well, I have a question on the report and, but...
Yeah, if you recuse, it's all in or...
Okay, okay. Then never mind.
Okay.
You'll be able to have to ask you to sit. Agency testimony? Now we will hear from any agency representatives. Is there any agency representative participating remotely who would like to offer testimony?
No. This is not one.
The applicant testimony, does the applicant wish to testify? Please be sure to state your name and address on the record, for the record, please.
Hi, yeah, Bill Weston, 7831. Sorry, your mic's not on. Bill Weston, 7831, Northwest Lone Pine Lane. I'm the applicant.
Thank you.
I do plan on contacting Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and working with them in regards to golden eagle and bald eagle nests. Find out when that is and when the nesting takes place. And I certainly would like to volunteer up that I don't have to come in any particular way on the runway. Can always come in one direction and lead the opposite direction instead of in and out, traveling in the same direction. So it's called a one-way. Would like to offer that up also. If anybody's got any questions, I might be able to answer.
Any questions for the applicant? Kurt, have you reached out to the dairy?
Yeah, AJ Dairy. I talked to a former employee who was now in Christmas Valley. But they're the only ones that I've been in contact with.
Okay. Yeah, studies show that for milk production, planes flying over can have an effect and I feel like...
Okay, you're talking about the actual dairy itself because...
Right.
Yeah, AJ Dairy property, which is their hayfield, is south of where my application for the airstrip is. The dairy itself is actually located three and a half miles to the east in the valley.
But you have not reached out to the dairy owners?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions for that?
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Have the adjacent property owners been notified of the proposed airstrip? Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in person who would like to testify in favor? None? Is there anyone participating remotely? None? Neutral testimony? Anyone in person? None? Anyone participating remotely? None? No one here, no one online? So no reason for an applicant's rebuttal? Does staff have any other comments in response to testimony or evidence offered? None?
None.
Thank you. Has there been an ask to continue the hearing or request that the record be left open?
No.
The commission will now determine if the hearing should be closed or continued in a time and date certain, either for additional testimony, additional information from staff, or for deliberation only. If the commission would like to keep the record open for additional written testimony only, the first seven days is to allow additional written testimony, next seven days for rebuttal to read to new evidence submitted in the first seven days. The last seven days allows for the applicant's submission of final argument. Would the applicant like to weigh the seven-day final argument? Sure, yes. Okay. Potential motions to close the hearing and deliberate on the application, continue the hearing to a date and time certain, additional testimony or deliberation only. If there is sufficient evidence on the record, we'll close the hearing to keep the written record open for a 777.
Mr. Chairman? Lucrenta?
Yes, Lucrenta.
I would like to move that we close the public hearing and begin deliberations.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So now we need a motion to approve or deny and include a specific revisions in the motion or any changes to the recommendation.
So you'll need a motion on the floor to deliberate?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just a motion and a second, right?
Correct.
Don't go through with voting.
Just the motion and a second to deliberate, correct?
We have that. What she just did.
No, you need a motion to approve or deny?
Oh, I see.
So that there's a motion on the floor to deliberate on.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to move that we close this, or that we approve this and begin deliberations.
You're excited?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh. We will have one additional condition that has been added over what we had previously, right? Number seven?
That's one to consider, yes.
That's one to consider.
Do you want to pull that back up? Is that all?
So are you any comments or questions in reference to...
No.
Mr. Chair, I have seen multiple smaller airstrips that, similar to what's being proposed on branches throughout Cook County, well, really, branches throughout Oregon. And they'll have the weather vane sock in their grass surfaced, typically grass surfaced. And throughout the inspections, we see wildlife around the area. I don't feel that it would have a significant negative impact on the surrounding properties with the limited use that's been proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just bring it to the people's attention that there's lots of horse activity that happens in the Lone Pine area and they have endurance races. This does butt up to the BLM. I've looked over the reports from the migration and it seems like there's lots of migrating animals, which is a big, big red flag to me for an airport, permitted airport by Cook County. I've asked the applicant if he can land on his own due will and he can. I just, I'm having trouble without talking to the federal government because I'm from there and I know there's lots of bald eagles, golden eagles that field across the field from you. I've seen lots of birds out there and I know they nest up there in the rocks. And I feel without talking to the federal government, finding out a little bit more, maybe even looking into whether people ride their horses all the time. A Cook County permitted airport is not a good decision, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Other comments on deliberation? We have any other loose ends in this that we need to make sure that we cover?
Clarification, please?
Yeah.
Basically, we're adding a new six and moving six to, which will be the new seven. Am I correct in that assumption?
This is staff. So what I'm hearing from the planning commission is... This is staff, so what I'm hearing from the planning commission is that what they're seeing on the screen with this potential condition to engage with an agency that is not active but to seek other measures to meet the same intent, it would be number six and connected to the finding for the comprehensive plan compliance piece. And then that number six would be the, what was from the staff report last week, condition of approval would be number seven. So those were the only two changes for the, for this version to bring in tonight.
That answer your question, Laquita?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question for staff, Mr. Chair.
Good.
Can you explain to us the process in letting the public know that this is being proposed? So people that use the surrounding area for trail riding, which I have in the past as well, they could have already been aware of this?
So we follow state guidelines with noticing, and that noticing goes to property owners within 750 feet of the property. They were noticed of a two-part public hearing. And the applicant also did a farm impacts test and included operational characteristics with the surrounding area. Again, their property is the, one of the western borders of Crook County. So their north and west property boundaries are not in Crook County. So that's Deschutes County, and that is BLM federal property.
John, you have something to say?
I'll go ahead and say it, I was kind of thinking it was a good idea to open my mouth. So our, all the state guidelines, those try to kind of mimic what's known as like standing in a civil suit, those who would actually be affected, and so it's the property owners and ones who live nearby. I don't think that the state standards are ideal for situations where it's adjacent to public land, whereas people use them land that don't actually have a property right. But that's what comes with public land, right? It's supposed to be used, and so it kind of comes with the ghost, but if we, so that's where we are. So no, people do not get noticed, they just use the land adjacent to there.
Then one quick, just, so if for whatever reason, they didn't go through this process, they can just do that, do whatever they want, based on the real requirement for them to go through this process? Am I correct or incorrect on that?
That's not what I was saying.
No, no, I'm just saying, based on what we heard previously, there was mentioned that this process is not a requirement to land your plane on your private property. Is that pretty incorrect?
I don't know. I know that in case of an emergency, there's carve-outs under common law. You can even land someone else's property if you need to, but my understanding is this is a Oregon land use that needs a permit to use, but I could be wrong.
I just want to clarify that, okay.
There's, just to draw your attention to the materials in the record, the Oregon Department of Aviation in their provisional letter of approval asked for coordination with the FAA and with Crook County for approvals. So.
Any other questions? Kirk? So, Laquita, could you restate the motion to approve or deny that you made and include your, the specific revisions in the motion for our discussions for the recommendation, for conditions as approved?
Okay, I'll give it a shot here, but I would like to move that we approve this application, finding that the proposed airstrip does meet the definition of a personal use airport, and the proposed use will not seriously interfere with or force a significant change in accepted farm and forest uses and will not increase the cost of accepted farm or forest practices on nearby land devoted to farm use, and that we adopt the proposed conditions of approval as indicated in the staff report with a new number six, which is on the screen, and the current number six will be condition number seven, primarily used for early, the months of April through November, et cetera. Is that good enough?
Yes.
Have you a second?
I'd second that, it's Monty.
Call for vote, Kirk? Name? Laquita?
Aye.
Michael, Les, hi. Marlo?
Aye.
And Monte?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So I have a draft decision, which is what you're looking at here, and can bring that back tonight for signature before the end of the hearing, if that works for the commission.
Shoot, 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 sorry.
We need a motion to close the hearing?
Hearing's already closed.
Already closed. Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you for the work session.
Okay. Thanks, guys. All right, so the planning commission will now move on in a work session regarding the Transportation Safety Action Plan, TSAP update, potential code updates on definitions for the related to dwelling unit and habitable space and accessory structures.
Commissioners, John, I serve community development director. I have good news and bad news. The good news is we are going to kick the TSAP Transportation Safety Action Plan discussion to December. The bad news is I've added a couple other things on your plate. I'd like to start with kind of low-hanging fruit.
I'm on Zoom.
The easy one, so let's start with the fine, I don't know if that matured since you guys, so and Lucy, you might want to come up on a, welcome Louis Seals, our code compliance officer, and Frank. I meant, I want to welcome Louis up here to, oh yeah, Frank, yeah, come on up, you're your purpose.
Yeah. Frank, can you have a place at the dais?
Get your chair.
So for those of you that were here last week, when we went with the community development update, I mentioned how the county had started implementing the specific code provision for aggregate producers, where there's kind of a simple mechanism when they are in breach of their conditional use permit or the standard in our code, where I can send them a letter directly alleging the allegations, and they can, they have a chance to challenge that before you guys. The burden's on us, or they can just pay the fine. And we got the fine, we got a check, which was great news. But then the question came to, how do we deposit this check, and where do we deposit it? And that brought up Crook County Code 1.04010. And if you can pull that up?
As you say, are we supposed to be following something?
Do you want the code or the memo?
The memo. The other memo.
I know.
Okay, great, so this, I draw your attention to sub-three. Fines recovered upon conviction for violation of any county ordinance shall be paid to the clerk of the court in which the recovery is had. After first deducting court costs in the proceedings, the clerk shall pay the remainder to the treasurer of Crook County or the general fund of Crook County. So this was written a long time ago, and this was back when our code compliance cases all went to the circuit court. Circuit court is very busy these days. For our regular code compliance cases, we have a hearings officer. For these specific aggregate provisions, it just comes, there is no hearing unless it comes before you guys, and so it doesn't make sense, first of all, for the circuit court to, for the check to go to the clerk of the circuit court and have them deduct costs, and then it also doesn't make sense to go to the general fund when these penalties that we receive are supposed to help go support Louis's salary. We are a e what you kill department, and so it's important that the money that we do bring in stays within us so we can staff appropriately and maintain a healthy budget. So I, as I read that, I just wanted to think of a simple fix that would make it basically changes as little as possible. So if you can scroll down, Hannah? Down to the next page. So here was my suggestion. You can see the strike-throughs are the language to be deleted, and then the italic red is what's to be added. So now it reads, fines recovered upon conviction for violation of any county ordinance may, so now it's permissive, be paid to the clerk of the court in which recovery is had. After first deducting court costs in the proceedings, the clerk shall pay the remainder to the treasurer of Crook County for the general fund of Crook County or such specific fund is designated for this purpose. A little bit leerys, but I think it gets the job done. I put this by legal in there in full support, and so this would just be a simple fix. So we have a place to deposit the check and save a couple steps.
Does this get you where you need to be though? Because what, who's going to determine whether it goes to the general fund? Is that your decision to determine that?
So we have a specific fund for code compliance, the fund is set up for this purpose, and so.
No, but it says for the general fund or Crook County or.
Right.
So.
So yeah, that would be our department, we get the check, there's a fund set up for it, so it would get us to where we need to go.
Okay. So nobody's going to push back and say, don't, just go into the general fund? I guess it's just.
It might be, I could be surprised. There was a request for money to come out of our budget today that surprised me. And so, but no, I, I think these are all stay within house, like it's a community development thing from start to finish, and so.
Okay.
Should that.
I just want to make sure it's getting you where you.
Yeah, no, should that arise, I definitely will come back to you and suggest further revisions. But I think this gets us there, and this is a code provision that not many people have looked at in a long time, so it's one of those that the chances of dust off some cobwebs, but not disturb it too much.
Any other questions or comment?
Question, Laquita? Um, so by doing this, that you're saying there is going to be, or there already is, a code compliance fund? And this is something that will be in the community development budget? So it'll be earmarked for code compliance?
Correct.
Okay. Is there already such a line in the, in the community development budget?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Thanks.
My pleasure. So this is pretty simple. Are there any further questions?
Is this, Kirk, is this just for aggregate stuff, or is this everything, right?
Everything.
Okay, it just happened to be that the fine was in the aggregate business, is that what?
That's what brought our attention to it.
Okay.
All right, so this, if there's no objections, I will include this with our broad code update that will come before you guys for a formal recommendation to the board of commissioners in December. All right, let's do the next wild card, that would be the next easier one. Louis might challenge this too. So can you pull up?
Do you need a vote on that, or?
I don't think so, you're not making a decision today, so you can make the vote, formal vote on it, we have the broad code update.
It's just putting it in the update.
And we can manufacture.
Yeah. But this is regarding placement of manufactured dwellings. This was put in our county code before my time here. I had not seen this provision until I assumed this role, and I was kind of surprised, and so we are looking at specifically sub-four, sub-A, the next line, Hannah, let me pull it up so I can read it on my computer. Placement standards for manufactured dwellings, manufactured dwellings constructed no more than 15 years prior to the date of application are permitted as a dwelling where a dwelling is allowed. The manufactured dwellings constructed more than 15 years prior to the date of application shall not be allowed for placement in Crook County except as allowed under subsection four B of this section or by exception of the Crook County Community Development Director. And so four B references mobile home parks, so that's the one carve-out. The other is by an exception by the Crook County Community Development Director. We are, you know, facing a housing crisis and affordability crisis. The state has recently passed legislation where counties are not allowed to implement any greater restrictions for manufactured dwellings than they are for stick-built dwellings in residential zones and within the UGB. But so it doesn't apply necessarily, I mean, obviously it does not apply in EFE zones, but this section has always it's been difficult to apply. This is regarding housing and the fact that you can, can't be more than 15 years old unless the community development director gives you a pass, and what are the standards, right? What are the criteria they need to meet to get this to pass? And nothing's written down, and so today, there was a property owner who wanted to place a manufactured dwelling on their property, they have 35 acres. It's obviously on resource ground. The manufactured dwelling is in good shape, and it's had a lot of improvements. It was constructed in 1975. And it's in Jefferson County. And so you know, they submit the material, they're told that they can't get it placed unless I say yes, and then they come to me, and they're excited, and they have all their pictures, and they want approval, and then I'm placed in a position where, and staff is placed in a position to explain it to them, and then I am having to explain to them how, you know, what a slippery slope argument is, that if I approve this, then where is the line going to be drawn, and then who can't get it approved? And then you know, so the one that they have on the hook costs $9,000. The other options they're looking at are over $100,000, and not in as good a shape, but they're newer, right? And so I just wanted to bring this one to your attention to see if this 15-year limits still makes sense, if the language still makes sense, or if you guys would like me to go to the drawing board and try to figure out a better way to address these types of issues.
My opinion of it, which wouldn't help these folks out, but it should fall in line with HUD, meaning I think that's 76, so there, because then they have building standards. I think the 15 years probably should go away, but I, in this particular case, 75, I mean, it puts you in a bad spot because you're actually allowing something that isn't built to the HUD standards. So I'm not trying to complicate it more, but I think 15 years is that maybe need to go away with, but maybe have some kind of criteria, but that's just my opinion.
To me, the 15 years is a little bit arbitrary and kind of elitist in this current affordability crisis, especially when, like I said, there are ones that are, and you know, so they brought up the idea that they've seen ones that are 20 years old that are in worse shape than the one that they have. And I said, if I got that, I would deny that as well. Exceptions are supposed to be exceptional, it's not supposed to be an easy pass. I'm supposed to apply the languages in our code. It's up to you guys and the board of commissioners to give us that code that we're to apply, and so.
If I may, John?
Absolutely.
And so I think, Mike, Les, I don't remember if you were a part of this conversation. Laquita, I know you were a part of the conversation, so to give the planning commission a little history with this manufactured dwelling standard, Crook County was one of many counties that did not allow single whites. If you were going to put a new manufactured home in Crook County, it needed to have a HUD sticker to comply with the siding standards, which you have to have a HUD sticker in order to comply to get a placement permit, right? On the building side. However, on the planning side. On the building side. However, on the planning side, it had to be. A double wide or larger. No single wides were being allowed. We had a community member. Come to the community development office and say. We wanna put a brand new single wide manufactured home on our property. We wanna downsize. We wanna be able to do a single wide. And our code at that time had no path for that. We went through public hearings. We went through work sessions. And part of the discussion at that time was maintaining property values. And we went through the manufactured home, the manufactured dwelling. Language and we talked about remotes and we talked about additions and we talked about. Siding and we talked about all the things, right? All the placement. And one of the things that came up was the building envelope. And the newer energy standards. Yes, we are in a housing crisis as noted. Um, there are additional energy standards that come into place and. That was where that fifteen year mark. And something about lending too, Mike, maybe can be out on that piece, but there was something around the lending piece. That, that lent itself to coming up with the timeframe. Is it, is it a great? Criteria to try to administer? No, no, it is not. Um, we are in a, a little different position now than we are then. Um, we have had some single wide um. Newer manufactured homes placed in the county, um, which. This was um. Opened up and through that work session and public process was the intent, original intent behind. So. Just to kind of bring you all up to speed on it. Mike, do you remember or Laquita, do you remember anything? Did it kind of jog memory?
We did talk about the fifteen years for single wides. So I don't know if it, did it, has the fifteen years always been?
No, so prior to the, prior to this language, you could not have a single wide and.
No, no, I'm just talking.
Right. It did not get specified for only single wides to be fifteen years. It became all.
All of them.
Manufactured dwellings.
I remember talking about for single wides, but.
But that didn't get translated in. So it was a blanket for all. So previously, if there was a active HUD sticker. Regardless of age and it was a double wide, you couldn't, you, that was through planning approval. Um, and then it would just be the placement standards for um, the building department. Then when that double wide component. We opened it up to single wides. It was the more of the safety and the standards that those um, were built to. To have the fifteen year or newer. And then. There's always the, well, we have a twenty year old manufactured dwelling, has new windows, has a new roof, has new sightings. We have all the permits. We're moving it out of Deschutes County or another county. A B C County and we have, we have all this stuff that really have made very large improvements to. The existing manufactured dwelling. So if it's sixteen, if it was sixteen, seventeen years old and they had that kind of lit checklist of things that they had done. That's what we were seeing. Since then, those are not necessarily. What has come in and what the requests have been. And then, um, so I think that's where a little bit of the frustration. And um, on both the applicant and staff's part at this point, right? So. About, does that help?
It's gonna be helpful. Thank you. Thanks, McDonald. Louis, do you wanna chime in on? On this issue?
Well, I, I think what Mike said, I mean, I know that you have to have a HUD sticker. On the structure for it to get a site placement permit. So if you just replace the fifteen years and stipulate that the single wide, double, triple wide, whatever, the manufactured home has to have. A HUD sticker or HUD approval. I think that would meet the criteria.
I think that would be helpful. I, I think, you know, even. I don't know, in my head, this is, this is a work session, right? We're trying to look this up. Um. I think the single wide, double wide distinction might make some sense to maybe have that in there and then, and then perhaps some other standards, criteria that, that lists uh, the factors that would go into an exception. If we're gonna keep the time limit, because as Kay said, if it's twenty years plus twenty five years, there's gonna be one that's past that, right? And so what does an exception mean? The way it stands now is, is certainly not clear and objective to what they need to meet. And so my preference would be for something, anything in there in the code um. To rein in my discretion, uh, cause it's not supposed to be. I'm not supposed to just be, uh, the emperor thumbs up, thumbs down guy. There's supposed to be objective standards they have to meet. Um, if they meet those, they, they should be approved. And so. I, I, I guess I'm ready to spring this, bring this to your attention to see if it, if it needs some work. If it does need some work, if you guys have any ideas on things we can add in here uh, to, to change it. So it's a little bit um, more clear and objective. And, and better for applicants and, and staff.
As Monty, you have a question? Is there a path or somebody with an older manufactured home to get a HUD sticker? Or is it? No. Okay. So that kind of drives some of the issues.
Right. But then again, a site placement doesn't address weatherization. Condition of the windows, whether they're double pane. And you know, it doesn't address any of those issues. It's how it's anchored down, the skirting, utilities.
You could still have a. Paper thin box that. That has a HUD sticker?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that can't be the only criteria, but it could replace the fifteen year mark.
Yeah, so fifteen year and then we can add other things that demonstrate it's uh, A, in good shape and then B, uh. Worthy structure to act as a dwelling.
Kirk, and so John, what you're telling me is that basically there's someone that you feel has met the criteria, but not. Following the current rule and you're asking us to change it? For them, kinda, is that what?
What I'm saying is there is no criteria.
Okay, so, but I thought that it was if you had a home that wasn't fifteen years or newer, then you couldn't be here. With it, right?
You can't, you can't unless you get an exception to the director without any standards on what that exception, how to give that exception.
You're the director?
I'm the director.
Okay, I got you.
And they were very excited. They found a great deal. They want.
Now, okay, okay. But I have seen some single wides that were up in Ochka West that were really. Nice updated homes that people put on there. But. We have the rules because we don't want the worn out trailers coming from Ben and putting on pieces of property over here. That's why they were originally established. To kind of keep that from happening. I know over in Madras, when I moved the trailer over there, they made you put a garage on it. I mean, they made you actually put some money in the infrastructure if you really wanted to move something older like that over there. And I'm not for sure, but I believe it's nineteen seventy five. You can't have it on the highway and move it from one place to another. I'm, I, it's one of those years. Seventy five, seventy six. Um, and I don't know if there's been an update on that since I. I haven't done this for ten or fifteen years, but it used to be there was a, an age limit to where you could actually. If it was in the seventies, I'm not for sure. Do you know anything about that, Mike?
You, you're, you're right. Where it gets complicated is just like you go buy. A twenty, twenty seven rig, you can buy that next year in twenty six.
Right.
So you're always, it's very hard determined. So it goes by manufactured day, but it falls in the same. Kind of thing with, with the construction of it, you know?
I have a question for Louis. If that's okay. So Louis, other, I, I don't, this is again, not my forte. Um. The ones built pre nineteen seventy five without the HUD stickers are, so. Are there circumstances where those construction standards were equal to or better than the ones that have HUD stickers? Okay, is a HUD sticker? What's that, what's that, what does that mean?
Well, so that, those are the standards by the manufactured home builders. So the building department doesn't have to question. Anything with the structural integrity or the components, because it's all been breathed through and meets a standard. So my, I mean, with my experience, I mean, keeping juniper acres out of the conversation, most people aren't gonna spend twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to move a. Five thousand dollar trailer. I, I don't think I, in the ten years I've been here, I've seen a structure that was dilapidated or in bad enough condition that it couldn't be. Reasonably improved to, to meet modern day standards. I know we're all picturing, you know, thirty five year old manufactured home, but. Uh, you know, like you said, new siding, new windows, new doors, better insulation, deckless heat system. I mean. You know, new fixtures. It's not an eyesore anymore.
Kirk, I got a question. Can you, is the HUD sticker, if you move it, let's say you moved it from point A to point D. It had a HUD sticker on it from, at point A. Does, and that HUD sticker still good? After you've set it up for somewhere else? So it doesn't expire?
Oh.
There's no, you, once you get the HUD sticker, you can't, even if it's a P O S, you're still not, you're still gonna be able to have the HUD sticker.
Yeah, if it's on the structure, it has to be on the structure. I mean, I've seen structures where somebody took it off because they, or they sided over it. And then once you lose that, once it's removed from the structure, if you have no evidence or proof that. It had one, then it doesn't qualify.
So I, I just looked up, it's June fifteenth, nineteen seventy six is what ODAN. Anything older than that and you can't get a trip permit to move it. So. I mean, so and, and, and. Correct me if I'm wrong. You, you're basically saying, hey, look, if it's over fifteen years, what are some criteria that we can put down to? Open a door for individuals to be able to go down this path, right?
Precisely.
So who's gonna determine, who's gonna go out and look at that? Is that gonna, is that gonna be the compliance officer or how's that gonna be determined?
So like with this one in particular, I assume is how it usually goes. They sent dozens of pictures of the, of the proper, of the, the structure itself and the wiring and the plumbing and the roof. And so um. Especially since this is in a different county, we're not gonna drive out there and personally inspect it at a time. And so. That's our current process.
Okay, so I would say if we were gonna do something to give. Somebody a pathway that they have to meet, you know, whatever level of electrical code requirements. That, you know, you've gotta have certain R value. You know, stipulations, you've gotta have maybe non combustible siding. That's the kind of stuff you're saying, hey, look, these things have been met. This is what gives you an opportunity to say, I'm sorry, I can't approve that. It's over fifteen years and you don't have X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, here's the why.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what we need to determine. I, I mean, that's fair. If somebody goes through the process and does that.
You guys don't need to turn that on the spot right now. What I, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking. Should I, sorry, Commissioner, uh. Wish you respect.
Laquita, I have a question. Um, wouldn't it be simpler just to take out the fifteen years? And so A would say manufactured dwellings can uh. Are permitted as a dwelling where a dwelling is allowed and then leave out the second paragraph. And then jump down to B. Where it says all manufactured dwellings which were manufactured in accordance with the laws in effect at the time of construction are allowed in all permitted mobile home parks. And where uh, a dwelling is permitted, like in A. And none can be in historic districts. And. Uh, D could stay. C could stay. Where you could put something has to have. Um, don't you think when, if it was in accordance with the laws at the time it wa, of, of construction? Covers all the HUD stuff? Not enough?
No, this is Marlo. Um, I do a lot of work down Christmas Valley in Fort Rock. And we, we want to have some specific requirements as to what's not allowed and feel okay to say, no, it's not allowed.
Agreed. So um, I can put my head together with staff and, and we can look at some other jurisdictions and see if there's other language that's better. Um, and so we can. Either another work session, we can bring that with the broad code update, but have a proposal for you guys that's uh, more fleshed out than this. That's um.
John, what would happen, this Kirk, what would happen if you had an application which had a. I don't know, three, four, five hundred dollar fee that you were able to have someone independently look at it with that money? Um, and then, and then once it's a pass or fail with the independent person, and then you don't have to have it on your plate as. If it, something happens, burns down and you can get it.
This is Marlo. That's a good idea, Kirk. So if you have something that is past a, a certain date, it's, it's that. That old, it needs to pass um, a home inspection.
With set criteria.
The other thing, Bonnie brought this up, but. I doubt seeing if he's gonna move it that far. But a lot of times manufactured homes, based on where they were built in the area, have snow load criteria and this and that.
Yep.
Uh, I can't imagine moving it that far, but it, but that would be.
Depends on the deal you got.
Well, and also lenders will not lend on something that's been moved. Twice.
Know that.
Who would do the inspection? Excuse me. Who, who would do the inspection? Is that something the compliance officer will get stuck with?
No, that's not how we would do it. And it's a very practical suggestion, but I don't know if that, if that uh, trips foul of, of land use. Would that be a land use decision then if they're giving the up or down?
Right.
I think you're better off just having a home inspector, qualified, certified home inspector go through it and make sure it's the stipulations that you decide. I mean, to me.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea, but it's. You'd have to have somebody that's real knowledgeable with Creek County's rules. Because aren't they different from Red Madras to Primeville, Sheets County, Burns?
So manufactured dwellings are um, handled differently throughout different counties. You're correct. Um, just, you know, like you were mentioning, our friends down in Christmas Valley, right? So. Um, what I'm hearing is that the planning commission is, is recognizing that the clear and objective standard for this is not here. Right? And with. There's um, different ways that we can go about this. Some, some guidelines that I'd like some clarification on if, if staff, we come back and start. Putting some time and effort into this is. Is there a. Is there desire to have a difference between a multi sectional versus single wide? Manufactured dwelling? Should there be, if it's single wide. It meets this. Fifteen years plus, or there's a double, a specific criteria, right? If it's a multi sectional and it has the HUD sticker. Is that? An issue or is it, is it going to be? Are they going to be combined? Is that something that, that is desired?
I think single wides and manufactured homes of double wides or whatever ought to be thought of as the same kind of thing.
Okay.
They're placed on the property.
I just, single wide cannot hold the same amount of people as a double wide and we're doing this because we're in a housing crisis. Is that what I got earlier?
Not necessarily.
This isn't a clear and objective standard. And we need to have clear and objective standards when we're talking about residential development. Regardless of where, if it's inside U G B, outside U G B, or inside the city.
The fact that we're in a affordability crisis is um, increasing the number of uh, manufactured dwellings that are people trying to cite. And also I did. People are trying to find different ways to um, establish dwellings or, or rental units, which will kind of play into the next that, work session.
I think you definitely have to have the HUD sticker. Somehow implied in that being. Because you have. You have RV manufacturers that are putting together pretty nice. Single wide trailers that are almost the size of these, which obviously don't have a HUD sticker. So. I think the HUD. HUD sticker definitely needs to be. Uh, incorporated in that.
Is this something that um. Would be opening up to more um, with the. So we had. Conversation around the accessories to a placement, right? So. Like Kirk, you were mentioning in um, Madras, you need to have a garage.
Like if you're gonna. Do in the city of Primeville too.
Right.
Within the city limits.
So that's not. That's not a criteria for the county at this point. Um, is that something that the planning commission thinks would have value?
I don't.
Thoughts?
I think that you're better off to charge them money for, if they're serious about wanting to do it and they pay it up, they're gonna, if they have to pony up four, five hundred dollars for application. They're gonna wanna make sure their. Houses. If they have to pony up four, five hundred dollars for application, they're gonna wanna make sure their house is.
But what are they truly gonna meet? Because how, home inspectors are home inspectors, right? And there it's, that's not affiliated with the county, it's not affiliated with the building code, it's not affiliated with, with county code. We don't have a state statute for it. Like I, I'm poking holes all over in it because that's, that's how my mind works. How, however.
I think we need to think about that, definitely.
I, it, it's a practicality of that would be difficult. And then you're waiting on yet another third party to do something. Like, uh, so that, I get it, um.
I mean, some, somewhere fifteen years old there, I mean, at ten years, they're falling apart.
It depends.
It depends on the manufacturer.
We have had, we have had one that moved from Deschutes County that had all the permit history. The where they came through and they redid the heating system, they redid wiring, they redid plumbing. They had a new roof on it, they had new windows in it, like it was really a nice. A home. And it was moved over, it was older than fifteen years at the time of application. But they have that permit history where they had gone, they had the HUD sticker, right? And then once you start making alterations, you need to go through the building codes, right? And you get that, and they produced all that documentation to go along with it. So that did kind of provide a more, um, clear and objective for that fifteen year. So that is something that we could look at too, like what improvements have been done? What is the maintenance history? Something to that effect of it, you know, did you, did you get permits or did you wire it yourself? Like that's the type of thing that I'm hearing.
I like that.
Interest like safety wise? Safety and energy standard or anything kind of tied around that? Is that?
I think the energy standard's a good one. I think your safety stuff with, you know, is it coming from somewhere that doesn't have much of a snow load? And now it's coming over here where you have a snow load. Uh, I think that's important. Um, I, I, some areas have high wind loads, some areas don't. So I mean, if you're gonna move a low wind load area to a high wind load area, probably not a good idea. I mean, I think through your basic. Building code requirements that are, are met during a permitting process.
That's what the HUD sticker does.
Okay. But that.
If you have the HUD sticker, you're.
Does that make the energy stuff?
If you have a HUD sticker, you can place it.
Okay. But I think you have to add.
I think, Louis, you may know this, but I, I'm, I'm trying to think why we were talking about fifteen years on the single wides. And I'm not certain on this, that's why I'm asking, but we may wanna make sure that. At certain years, I, I mean, when that HUD sticker came out on double wides, pretty much everything went two by six. The walls. I, I, I don't know if that was the case for single wides as well. There was a reason we talked about fifteen year and I.
Part of it was the energy envelope. So, so part of that standard that, um, is in the ORS. That talks about you can't place, you can't place more restrictions on a manufactured dwelling than you would a stick-built house. If you're in the UGB, which is what, um, John was talking about first with the sand belt went through. And part of that was, um, this, this building envelope, right? This energy building envelope that goes around the site built. Structures, right? And so you have a, an energy component to it. And Mike, there was, I'm looking at you because I remember the conversation with something around the two thousand seven. And there was an energy, or there was, there was an, it was something like that. Um, because this was two thousand nineteen when we did this, so it was, if it was two thousand five, you know. And I, there was, there was something around that energy envelope. However, we don't have building codes. I mean, Louis is very knowledgeable, but building codes there. I don't believe they actually have a date. Certain for that energy efficiency or some, because it was really hard. To then go back and say, as of this date, this is what. The, the newer updated would be. But the, um, for a single wide with that. Framing would potentially be a, a point in time, right? That we could then look at is something.
More framing and the tone. I mean, some of the older, not mayor, much older. Single wides, you didn't take off the tone. I mean, it's kind of lowed it on. So, I, I, I mean, there's different, there's, there's different aspects to the single and the double. So it's, it's not at seventy, nineteen seventy-six, they all had, the single whites were special.
What, Kirk, what about financing? Mike, isn't there a year that they won't, bank won't finance it? Or would all us do it died okay?
Would be helpful if I came here, uh, more educated on the history of, uh, the construction of manufactured dwellings. Um, it's just, we had a, a work session, so it's popped up. These are, these are all great comments by the commissioners and so, um. Do you think we have enough direction to at least start going down this rather hole?
Yeah.
Looks like about two thousand six is when.
I'm wondering if the fifteen years didn't get misinterpreted. Because I'm wondering when we did that, uh, that, that's not right though, because I don't know how you would do that. I was thinking they shouldn't be, at the time we did it, two thousand nineteen, it shouldn't be older than fifteen years. Meaning two thousand whatever, you know what I mean? Like a specific date. Because otherwise this would go on and on and on fifteen years from now. They were built really good. I, 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 I think that had something to do with it, however, I could totally see how the fifteen years got put in there. But I think we were thinking, as of today, it shouldn't be no older than fifteen years, which would have put it in back in two thousand whatever. Yeah, and so that would have been more sense. It, it does, but I, but I don't remember well enough. But that's, that's what's coming to mind. Because saying just fifteen years old. But like now, that's a two thousand ten unit, they were built pretty good. So, I, I don't know, but that's, that's what's coming back a little bit.
I, I look forward to bringing something before you guys that is fleshed out and based on, um, something objective and meaningful. And so, uh, appreciate your time on this.
Well, and something you can say.
Exactly. Yeah, here's, here's why we chose this. This is, this is why it's, uh, protects health life and safety. Or some other, uh, basis for what we come up with. We can definitely improve. I think we all agree we can improve on the way through it.
Well, and just, i- i- if you think about, I, I know people, they're, sometimes people wanna move a manufactured home. Because they got a good deal or maybe they upgraded a bunch of stuff. But I don't think enough people realize that if you're having a, if you have a four hundred dollar a month energy bill. Right? Versus something that, like, you look at the, the return on investment for, you know, a hundred dollar a month on something newer. You're, that's three hundred dollars a month that adds up really fast over the next five years. And you might be able to save a big chunk of that by doing certain things. I think that, to me, that's a, that's kind of an important factor to think about when coming up with those conditions.
Yeah, I agree. And you also need to think about the next owner, right? And so maybe they don't understand that, um, because they're just purchasing the property and there's a dwelling on it and then they're stuck with that electric bill. So you haven't even think about the current owner and then, and then future owners and obviously health, life and safety. So, um, like I said, I'm, I'm looking forward to us coming up with something brilliant for you guys. Which, uh, brings us to the main, main event. Um, I, I don't think, brilliant is not the right word to describe what I'm proposing on this one. I, I wanna make sure. Um, it's clear that this is not a fix. Uh, we are only in control of what we can control. Um, and so, uh, what I bring before you are two additional definitions that help provides some context to our current definition for a dwelling unit. The goal here is to make things, uh, again, more objective and clear for applicants. Uh, and easier for staff to, um, process, uh, and ideally, um, help. Limit the number of accessory structures that are used as dwellings and, and sold as dwellings. Uh, and so, um, Louis is gonna provide a lot of help here. Um, we've, I, I've passed this along with, with staff. Um, at the end, I'll, uh, share with you my discussion with our billing official, um, at the end of the day. Uh, I wanna make sure that we get all sides on this. Uh, but so our, um. Since I've been here, this has been an issue that's come up almost at least probably every week of, um, accessory structures that. Uh, our techs and our staff, um, are left kind of scratching their heads. And, uh, the, you know, if it, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck. Um, isn't how land use is supposed to go, it's not how, it doesn't provide a lot of clarity. And, and, you know, the applicants and say, I wouldn't need a fix. And, um, it's, it's hard to really pin down what that answer is. And so, uh, you can see in the middle here, and you got that PowerPoint. Um, we are talking about dwellings, uh, and the difference between a dwelling and an accessory structure. Um, so, okay, there you go. So accessory structures with habitable space, uh, I've been able to get land use building approval and thereafter, um, converted living quarters. That's something, um, if people are motivated enough, we're never gonna be able to stop. If they, uh, you know, they can come get their permits, get their approval, um, staff leaves the structure and then they can come in and, and do whatever they want. Um, without permits and, and get past the system. But we can control how it starts and what the standards are now. And so, um, obviously we have residential density standards on our resource ground. Uh, and then this also leads to a lot of issues for, for Louis, uh, and then for future. A lot of these have been caught when it's being marketed, um, as a dwelling, when it, it never was or should have been a dwelling in the first place. Um, all right, next slide. So here's the current definitions that we have. Uh, this is in our code, so accessory dwelling unit. Um, this is an ADU, and this is what, um, we're trying to prevent. An ADU means an interior attached or detached residential structure that is used in conjunction with or that is accessory to a single family dwelling. Accessory structure means a use or structure incidental and subordinate to the main use of the primary structure. Or the primary use of the property in which is located on the same parcel as the primary use. And then the big one here is dwelling unit, uh, means one or more rooms in a building designed for occupancy by one family. And having not more than one cooking facility. And so, um. That, I think that definition of dwelling unit makes common sense, uh, but it doesn't provide a lot of meat for me. Uh, one or more rooms, okay, that's clear. Um, not more than one cooking facility, that's clear. I mean, kind of what is a cooking facility actually mean? Uh, but the big part is designed for occupancy. And so what we wanna prevent in my head is, um, an accessory structure that does not need the primary dwelling for living. Right? It's as independent living facilities, uh, because that's when you have something that can be rented out as an ADU. Uh, because they don't need to go to the other house ever. They can just go into their own accessory structure and they can bathe, they can eat, they can, um. Obviously with bedrooms, uh, and that's, that's what we're trying to, um, find a way to, um, limit. So, next slide. And so we have our, uh, Oregon Residential Specialty Code, and so they have different definitions. There the definition for dwelling means any building that contains one or two dwelling units intended or designed to be built, used, rented, leased, let hired out to be occupied. That are occupied for living purposes. Dwelling unit means a single unit providing, and here's the, here's like in that language, complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. Including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitations. Uh, and then they have a definition for kitchen there that we don't currently have, means an area used or designated to be used for the preparation of food. Next slide. Again, so I'm saying, where, what are the lines? So, um. Dwelling means they can't have more than one cooking facility and then I. I kind of, I'll get to this later, but why are we, if it's, if it's otherwise a dwelling for a single family, why are we limiting them to one cooking facility? Does that make, I don't know, um. What if they want two kitchens in their house? And what happens? There's no language here carving out outdoor kitchens, right? Do we wanna prevent people from having an outdoor kitchen? Uh, that hasn't how it's been applied, but i- i- their code right now is what it says. Um, the kitchen means an area used for preparation of food. What exactly does that mean? Um, and then, you know, uh, accessory structures are supposed to be incidental supported to the main use. Uh, and they say this, even though it's a bit like a dwelling, it's, it's just a shop, right? That's what they say. Um, all right, so next slide. So here is, uh, Louis provided this, this is a shop with a full bath. You can just kind of run through these slides real quick and, and so. That's the kitchen.
You just wanna prepare your food in there.
There's a sign for that episode where he cooks in the shower.
So what define?
Well, that's not a kitchen.
At one point, didn't it, the stove define a kitchen?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's what our current practice is basically. Uh, it can have everything, but it can't have a stove.
Okay.
So in this particular, that particular picture then, it wouldn't be considered a kitchen, so. I mean, is that what you guys are talking about?
I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I didn't hear. If, so in this, in our definition then, without the stove being in there, it's not considered a kitchen?
Correct.
Correct. So currently, in this particular case, if, and we, there is any reason we wouldn't allow. A three-piece bathroom in a shop. So you can have a shower, but the problem is, once you have a shower, people can bathe. So what they did here is they just, they get, they had a sink. In that previous picture, they just backed up to the bathroom sink, they put the kitchen sink. And then in this case, they knew, oh, we can't put this oven in because we can't have a kitchen. So we're gonna go with a cooktops. So they have an induction cooktop plugged in, they have a toaster oven, they have a microwave, and they have a refrigerator. Which currently we don't, we're not here to discuss whether you can have a countertop or, you know, microwave or cooktop. Um, click, uh, so what happens is, so you do, you get the bathroom and then you put in the little food prep area. And then it becomes your ADU that you rent out on Airbnb.
But not really. Cause we don't have, cause it's not an ADU.
Right.
It hasn't been reviewed under the structural building code for residents. Um, but you're right, Louis, that's, that's exactly.
Over the years, people have learned, but they can get away with them with their hands. So they, they make accommodations for stove, but when we do the inspection, there's no stove. But the two, two forty, two twenty plugs there, inspectors see it, we all know what's gonna happen.
The hood van.
Yeah, there's, there's washer and dryer, there's laundry.
Hookups there because they wanna have a kiln in their shop.
Correct. Yeah, it's gonna be for the kiln, exactly. And we've had that multiple times.
Like I said, the affordability crisis, uh, it seems like these are happening more and more. I've been here long enough to really tell. But it, it seems like this is, uh, only gonna become a bigger issue until there's a solution to the affordability, uh, for housing crisis. You go.
And the affordability doesn't necessarily just mean that there, it, it's how they're. I've had, I've had calls where it's, they're affording to buy the property, knowing that they're gonna have to rent this out. Or that they have a family member that is going in with them to purchase the property. And the family member needs to have their own space. And it's not a, it's not a hardship situation, right? So affordability has a lot of different aspects to it. It's not just, um, a low income affordability issue. Or a high income affordability issue. It's a multi-generational living affordability issue. It is, um, affording, affording your median home price. However, there needs to be additional, there needs to be three or four different streams of income. To be able to afford a median home price in times. So I think that has really spurred, um, the development. Where, where we're seeing now, um, and Louis, you and I have both been. This seems weekly, Hannah, you too, John's a little newer to the, the party, but, um.
It's a lot of fun though.
It's happening more and more with new construction, right? So it's not necessarily that we bought a property that has a shop. That now we're gonna have a really great tack room, right? Like, or a really great vet room. It's, we're building a house in a residential area. And we now have a shop. That looks like this. So it's, it's even more with. That looks like this, so it's it's even more with new construction coming in, not necessarily even. Existing and making modifications.
So just like. It it's the the bigger issue is somebody's retrofitting the shop into an ADU that's not approved and permitted. Right? Like that's the biggest issue that you run into versus you bought a house, you built an ADU, you permitted it. It's a dwelling or an accessory dwelling, that's not the issue, right?
So accessory dwellings are only allowed in Palbeet.
Right.
And they've only been allowed outside of the UGB for a couple of years.
Right, I mean, I know I went through this, I have I have an AD, it's not an ADU, it's a it's.
Uh huh.
It was permitted as a as a as a an extra bedroom, that is the way that they put it together, it does not have a stove in it.
Mm-hmm.
It was permitted, everything was approved, um but now that the rules have changed in Palbeet. Um I would imagine that I was I had to sign something, say that you know this was not going to be rented out, that you know all of that kind of stuff. Um but I would imagine that that there's lots of, well, I know of a couple that in our neighborhood that have, you know. Built a garage with an apartment above it for a family member and and then they rented it out and now the whole property's. Then they're. Airbnb or whatever else um as two separate structures, um even though I'm sure they had to sign the same thing I did. Which just says I'm not going to rent this out.
Maybe went through that at all.
Right.
A big component of this is the food preparation and that's kind of what John focused on. I mean, we have the habitable space issue, which you can have, right? You can have an office, you can have a hobby room. You can have uh you know a finished space, a man cave or whatever you want to call it in an accessory structure.
Right.
Now keep in mind, an accessory structure could be a hickory shed or a container.
Right.
Right? You still have to get the permits for those improvements.
Right.
Has to be current, you know, building code standards. Um but we've always wrestled with this, can't have an oven, well, can you have a cooktop? Well, no, that's you can cook with it, so you can't have an oven and a cooktop? No, you can't have that, okay, so what can I do gas piping?
What can I?
Yeah, can it? So if I have a gas range and I have a one-ten outlet to plug my gas range into, is that is that okay? So that's where John's done a really great job um defining. And that's what we're going to dissect here is the design for occupancy or habitable space and then the definition of a kitchen. Since it's not clear, not on the state level, not with building codes, not with planning.
Can you get down to a couple of slides Hannah to the?
John, what's the what is what's the fine? I mean, because that's how you get quit people quit doing this is you bind them and then they stop, you know?
We walk them through the process.
No fine?
Well, we walk them through the process to fix it through land use approval and permits, or they have to take it out. If they can't meet the criteria, then they have to remove it. So then if they don't want to do that willingly, then we go to a hearing and then the hearings officer imposes fines and.
And so let's just say my neighbor, he's got one and I call him. Would I call the county and I say, he's up there, he's renting it out, I don't like this, and then it's your job to go knock on their door and say, hey. And what if they say, I don't want to let you in? Then you have to go through the court system to be able to get in there?
I haven't anybody do that, I'm persuasive. But um yeah, just need to sign complaint for that, well. Not to say if it's a fire life safety hazard, I mean, if we know this wasn't permitted, I'll still push the issue because if there's people living in it. Like I have one right now where there's children living in a an apartment above a barn and the bedroom windows exit into the hay storage area of the barn. There's no outside windows and these kids are sleeping in those spaces, so we can't have that. So you know, I'm not going to wait for somebody to be willing to step up. Um but on the other side of the coin. In Palbeet, my biggest cases have been in Palbeet recently and these are people with million-plus dollar homes. That have converted their shop into beautiful dwellings and they had family members living in them. And then they put them up for sale and then a realtor calls and says, hey, was this permitted? I can't find it on the system. And we start looking into it, well, no, it wasn't permitted. But all those people have the resources and they're motivated because they want to sell and so they. They come in and they get the permits and they go through the process to get it approved and they remove the stove or the oven and they, you know, whatever we have to do to get it approved. But that's not always the case.
So um I reiterate, this is a work session uh and I I need to correct Louis Seals, this is I don't I don't feel like this is um a a great definition. Um and this I should have, I meant to put fix in quotes there because as I said. Um you know, this has been an issue for a very long time and I don't think there is a perfect fix, uh but I think this is an improvement. And so uh what I put together um is short and sweet and and I think um. Clear and objective enough to make it better for applicants and better for staff moving forward and so. Uh as I said before on the the definition for. Let me just read the the definition for a dwelling unit we currently have again, uh dwelling unit means one or more rooms in a building designed for occupancy. By one family and having not more than one cooking facility. So here I added a definition for design for occupancy because what does that mean? That's what the whole definition of dwelling unit hinges on. Uh and so what I put together is a structure or a portion of a structure with greater than three interior plumbing fixtures. Designed to include permanent independent living facilities, including but not limited to a kitchen, bath and space for a bedroom. Uh and so this kind of mushes together um the Oregon residential specialty code um definition. And tries to um. Pointed some specific things that would turn this into uh something that's designed for occupancy with the ultimate goal, like I said, being something. Um that is dependent somehow on the main dwelling for living purposes. And then so with this, the one of the big things is always a kitchen, um and so kitchen, this will be another definition. This is the two proposals, is adding these two definitions, one under D, one under K, kitchen means an area with a habitable space designed to be used for the preparation of food. Which includes a two hundred and forty volt electrical outlet or gas piping, so just the piping itself um. Or the outlet itself, not actually, it doesn't matter if the stove's in or not, and at least two of the following. A sink, countertop exceeding six lineal feet, dedicated space and electrical outlet capable of supporting a refrigerator exceeding five cubic feet. Or space with access to electrical and drain hookups that could reasonably be used for a dishwasher. Yep, next slide please. And so here's an example of a commonly permitted structure. Uh it's probably hard to see there on the screen, I think you might have some in front of you. And so uh with this new definition, this would not be permitted as it has six plumbing features. The kitchen, a full bath and space for bedroom, um and so another thing we would get is we would get drawings that um. You know, the architect would put bedroom, kitchen, whatever, and they would be crossed out and and just written storage.
Sewing room.
Sewing room, um and so it doesn't matter what it's designated as, it means what it's designed for and so here. Um zoom in on my screen so I can see it better.
John, are these independent septic systems or are they just mainly they're so? At that point, when you do something like this and you only have bleach lines to for the home, which is permitted. How do you establish that, hey, you need a couple extra lease lines, you don't have the capacity to run your s- I mean.
That's part of the compliance evaluation process, so the minimum standards for a bedroom house. So if this has one bedroom and the house has four bedrooms and now you need a fifteen hundred gallon septic tank and you need four hundred and seventy-five feet of drain field. So it's a major modification in order to be able to keep it. Um but this most the majority of three-bedroom homes, the system's designed for four and this has one bedroom. So they still have to do an authorization to connect, but they wouldn't have to modify the system to meet the criteria.
And what happens if they're on like a sand filter or an ATT system or any of that as if?
So they so they're still designed for a four-bedroom, so if you go over the four-bedroom, you're going to need to increase the drain field.
But that's if it's marked a bedroom.
Yeah, right, right.
First one that you saw was a shop. No bedroom, habitable space, storage, kitchen, like.
That's a slippery one right there.
That is, yes.
Big time.
Plus, it's kind of silly that that I've always thought this was silly, that it's it's determined based on your bedrooms. And not the amount of plumbing fixtures that are going to actually contribute towards said septic system.
Yeah, they're they're basing it on occupancy level, not using or not fixtures.
When you get in a Captain Philip Juniper Canyon, you start flooding that septic system, you're going to have problems fast and then you have to deal with smell. Plus, you're going to have to do your septic, you have to put a new cap in there because you've waterlogged it.
Yeah, no poop on the ground.
No.
That's our rule.
So that's what's nice with John's definition with the design for occupancy. It really reigns in that habitable space definition that we've struggled with and what that means and then the kitchen. Helps us control situations like this where you can't, you know, get this permitted and then put in the oven. And all the other components, you wouldn't be able to get the washer and dryer in there. Um you wouldn't have a three-piece bathroom if you're going to put a another sink in the kitchen area. So I mean, you people have to going to have to pick and choose, it's going to really control their ability to. I mean, these, you know, these are the people that are following the rules, obviously, we're just fixing the rules to make better control of it, but.
Um just for clarification. Maybe I missed something, wh- where do you get six plumbing fixtures in this picture?
You look at count right, so there's the toilet, there's the bathroom sink, there's the shower, so there's three. There's a washer, there's four, there is the kitchen sink and then the dishwasher.
Dishwasher, okay. Alright, gotcha, so what you're saying or the theory on this is. Somebody has something like this and a complaint, you you have something like this to go off of and say now. Because you've got too many of this or too many of that.
Well, so again, if it was permitted as a shop and now you've got this habitable space. The code is different, if it's going to be habitable space as opposed to just garage or shop space. So they're still going to have to get an architect or they're going to have to provide detailed information in order to for that habitable space to meet the code. Regardless of whether it's there's a food prep area or kitchen area or.
Mm-hmm.
And where where this really kind of comes into play is when you're talking with folks that like Louis just said, like it's it's permitted at a shop. Right? And. It was constructed as a shop and now after the fact, if it's purchased by someone else or a a com. A compliance case comes in, a signed complaint comes in, those property owners not only, I mean, they have to go out and get. Independent engineering on that structure, like that that could be a a huge cost, right? Especially on new property owners purchasing um and then trying to work backwards. Having them rip off all of the finish up on the inside because the electrical was never inspected. Having them rip like they basically have to deconstruct everything to go back through the process. So hopefully having this spelled out cleaner at the beginning. Of the process would help alleviate some of that.
So if they came in and they wanted to do something in their shop, having this criteria in place, obviously, they would say, okay, we're wanting. We're not going to put a dishwasher in a sink and a shower in it, right? I mean, but if we follow the rules and we have. A bathroom and maybe a sink in the kitchen or so, I I I get what you're, that they do that front.
Couldn't you question?
Is that basically right?
Right, but a lot of these, a lot of the people that deal with are not the people that did the improvements. They bought the structure that way thinking everything was fine and then.
And they go to sell.
And then they and then they go to sell or they have someone living there and I end up with a complaint for whatever reason. And they're like, well, this is, I didn't do this, I bought it this way, well, they're so responsible to fix it.
So what what don't you like about what you put?
Oh, sorry.
Or did you want to go through more of this?
We can go through more.
I heard.
Yeah, Commissioner Stank, do you have a comment or question?
Question, couldn't you just make a rule for shop construction that they're only allowed a sink and a toilet? As far as plumbing is concerned, anything over that is considered different than a shop? Is that not doing?
Good, um is that is I'll I'll share uh building officials comments later, I'm 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 trying to balance um. Property rights and the ability of people to do a variety of things with their accessory structures um while just reading in um. This purpose to use them as accessory dwelling units and so um I'll just, you know, share it now uh. Uh so the building official not thrilled with with this, he's 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 strong property rights guy, um doesn't want more rules. Uh we talked through things, he started to feel more and more comfortable with it, but you know, he's bringing up examples of he wants a game room. And he has a, he wants to be able to, you know, do his laundry in the shop um and have a game room for his buddies, it's got, you know, a kitchen and this and that and so. Most of the things he was describing, I was like, alright, well, that's a that's a dwelling unit because someone could just live in that, he's like, but I don't want to, I I just want to use it for a game room. Um but we can't, if we could go by the owner system, um it would be a different story. Uh obviously, we can't and so I'm trying to find a balance where we're giving people enough flexibility, enough options where they can still do a great many things with their accessory structures. Um other than using them as dwellings.
Another part of that, like Pete is, if you have horses, you really don't want to wash those blankets in your home. Washer and dryer that you're washing your clothes in, so even if you had a bathroom and a washer and dryer and a sink. You wouldn't, I mean, that would even. Hit your six plumbing fixtures very quickly.
Alright, let's go to the next one and um so here's another one, uh. I think I was kind of reading them out of this one, Chair Warren, right? I listed the separate public fixtures for making it easier to read. But this to me, I mean, this is the one where it it. Looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, right? Uh this is clearly something someone would live in um. And this is not the intent of the rules and so uh that would not be permitted currently, uh but go to the next one. There's another structure um. It's gonna be okay because it has uh three plumbing fixtures, um the stove, but no other kitchen plumbing or or countertop or any of those other things. Uh and then so it's it's dependent on the main dwelling uh for bathing and food preparation. Um regardless of of what's happened there in that sewing room, uh but we still want to make sure that sewing room has proper ingress and egress and uh. Because it's probably won't won't be used by as a sewing room by the future occupant if it is indeed used as a sewing room by the current occupant, but. So this would be able to get it under the proposed definitions, um and then we have another um. Go ahead and go to the next one, we have another. Right? Is this a dwelling? Um is this is this a dwelling unit or is this a multi-family dwelling unit? Uh we just got this one like a week ago, right?
Yeah.
And so the other benefit of these definitions is this will help um define what's more than one dwelling, we do have a definition currently for.
This one actually has three kitchens.
Yeah, three kitchens.
So in the middle of the in the middle of the plan, um the kind of square dotted area is the patio. So that's the back patio and then yep, right there, and then if you go down, that's the outdoor kitchen area. And then to the directly to the left and right, that's one kitchen, there's a second kitchen. There's also a three-car garage with two, what are they, vestibules? Um one on each side of that opening um there, so um it was a gorgeous design.
Two front doors.
It was really neat.
Really neat, it would look great in Texas, I think.
Well, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Eh yeah, but is it is it all separated with firewalls and yeah, so it's a, I guess. Only issue I have, especially on a farm or ranch, is if you have multiple families living under one roof or you're going to. And you want to build something like that. Why is it not permitted?
Because it's a multi-family and or E F U zones don't allow for multi.
Cause it's a multi-family and, or E F U zones don't allow for multi-family.
But you can put multiple structures. You can just peel off a piece of property.
Not necess- it's, it's a lot more, there's a lot more to it than just peeling off a piece of property. And there's a lot more criteria to it. Um, I think, and John, you touched on this earlier, like. Doing, why do they need to have two full kitchens? And this, this one has three. So you have, now, I have, I have approved multiple kitchens in, in a dwelling. They had a specific need to have a clean kitchen. Right? So that's where they did their canning. They're very, it was very specific that that was a clean kitchen. They had it, um, from, it wasn't the, or Health Department O D A, I think, or Department of Agriculture. Actually has guidelines for secondary kitchens that are used for food prep, right? So you have very strict regulations with that. That property owner was very clear, like this is my canning kitchen. It was in a shop. It was, you know, all the things, right? They sold and that became a compliance case. So. There's an issue, there's things that go along with that.
So we do have a definition for a dwelling two family. It means a building containing two dwelling units and designed for occupancy by two families. And so by, um, bettering the definition for a dwelling unit and design for occupancy, it will also help us, um, rein in the, the definition for, uh, dwelling for two families.
So this is something you would allow? Is that what you're saying?
No, uh, this is a two-family, uh, dwelling. So it's a, uh, is a duplex, basically. And so I forgot, um, what exactly we told the applicant on this one, maybe kind of, cause they, the whole intent with this one is they, they wanted this for two families and they said they wanted for two families. They didn't wanna have to eat with the other family or cook with the other family, um. And then so what do we need to fix to make this fit under the rules, right?
They had multiple, multiple talks with staff, multiple phone calls and, um. It was not on a large ranch. It was a tiny piece of property.
Gotcha.
And, um, I just explained to them, hey, our dwelling definition means that it's for a single fam- you have approval for a single-family dwelling. That's what you have approval for. Show me how this is a single-family dwelling. You have two entrances with vestibules. You have two complete kitchens with an outdoor kitchen. Like, how does this meet the definition? And they came back with an altered, uh, house plan. That was even really, like, I was like, it's a really cool plan. But they got rid of one of the kitchens. They, they still get their, you know, outside, outdoor kitchen or whatever, and they kinda rearranged the interior components to where it looked like there was more of a shared kitchen in a more communal area rather than two completely separate areas. But they, they were willing to work with us and they were willing to spend the additional dollars to then go back to her architect and their plans because they'd already had this drawn up, right? So, um, but it, it did, it did end well, but it, it was not this plan.
Would it have been different had they not had separate garages and entrances and?
It, I mean, one of the things that we did instituted a couple of years ago was that, um, if you had, like, if you had a, a type of a home that had two main entrances, that it looked like one main entrance. Because what we don't wanna have is fire, life, health, safety show up to an address and not know where to go, right? So one would have to be subordinate, show us how that, you know. People have front doors and back doors all the time, right? But when you have two that look like front doors. How does fire and rescue know where to go? How does an ambulance and emergency responders know where to go? So that was really, so that was an internal policy that, um, was a couple of years ago now. We haven't, we don't have it come up very often where there're like two main entrances.
All right, Hannah, can you go back to slide twelve?
I don't know what the numbers are.
So the proposed definitions. So, um, like I said, I, I, I don't think this solves everything, obviously. And I don't know how this de- how these definitions will work in practice. Uh, one thing that I went back and forth on, and I think Louis did as well, on the definition of kitchen. Right now, if you don't have, um, the two hundred and fifty volt outlet or gas piping, you can have all the rest of that stuff and it won't be the definition of a kitchen. And so one thing we were thinking about was making that one of the, the factors and saying at least three of, um. But there was, I, I forget, I, I think, um, Ashley kinda talked me into that. I forgot why I did another. We, we can never get to like the, um, I like to use like the Dalton Brooks example from Roadhouse who just lived above the barn and didn't have any plumbing or. You can never get those guys, right? But I'm, this is an incremental, hopefully an incremental improvement, um. And this was the, uh, the best that we could come up with at this moment. And so, uh, I'm open to any suggestions or comments uh, you have with this language or even the, uh, the wisdom of even trying to fix this.
The two forty or indoor, the gas piping pretty much eliminates the cooking range or cooktop. It's, we're never gonna prevent a counter plug-in, you know, one-ten outlet induction cooktop. That's just. Or, uh, induction.
And then it's the pot.
Convection countertop or a fryer or a toaster oven, um. But the people that are designing these as full dwellings and renting them out, they all have ovens and cooktops.
Yep. And so you can have your kiln, if that's what you wanna do, you can have your kiln, but you can't have the rest of the stuff that turns into a kitchen. And we, uh, you know, we'll take your word for it that you're gonna use it for a kiln, but.
And you can't have a dishwasher because currently you can pretty much have a dishwasher anywhere.
See that? To me, that protects the county because if you're allowing the two forty, you almost are. I, I know you're not, but the, the, it's almost like, yeah, we know what you're doing.
Yeah, we, we, not yet.
But not having, I, I mean, so I can see why that might have some meat to it. What about a shop when you want two forty? I don't think you could have it in the kitchen. Is that correct?
So you can have, you can have the two forty and you can have, you can have at least, you can have, uh, one of the other ones. So you could have a big countertop with the two forty. You could have space for a fridge with the two forty, uh. And you have drain hookups for a dishwasher, but you can't have more than two of those other things in that same area.
So it's like they, not having the outlet right there. Okay, right in plain sight, but you know. With the dotted line on the countertop.
So that's currently the game you play. Or you can't have the oven. Okay, we, we took it out, go and inspect. Yeah, there's the space. The plug, but the oven's gone. Okay, now you meet the criteria. Well, soon as I leave. Right back in the slot.
And I, and it gets, the, with this type of a definition, um, what gets submitted to the planning department for a floor plan and what gets submitted to the building department for a floor plan. A lot of times doesn't really match, right? So, um, but giving the, giving the builders and the property owners a clear, like, here's your checklist, right? Here's what you can, here's what we're looking for. Here's what we're gonna do. And it doesn't matter what it's labeled, kitchen, art prep, sewing room. Attack room.
You're aiming, you're aiming this mainly for people that are coming in to get a permit, not for people who have sidestepped the process.
Both, but both, right? Like for people coming in because our, our counterstaff and plant, all of us are answering questions. What can, what exactly can I have? So it's, it's the find the hole, right? Where's the hole? How can I get through it and do? How far can I push the boundary? And how far can I push the boundary? And is there a repercussion for that? And without, currently, we don't have a great answer for it, right? We have the no oven. And so the plans come in and they would be a kitchen anywhere else, but here it's meal prep. Or not even meal prep, it's just prep space. Or kitchenette. Lot of kitchenettes, a lot of wet bars. Yeah, there's a lot of wet bars in, in.
So this doesn't do like you do with your permit. You don't have to do your septic the first permit whenever you do anything, like when you're building.
If it's not labeled bed- bedroom, then it's not gonna, it's not even gonna go through septic.
She doesn't?
It's super weird because it.
And storage rooms.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
You could have three bathrooms and no bedrooms. It just seems really weird.
All those homes should be fifteen hundred gallon tank right off the bat, you'd think with that many fixtures, you know?
Yeah, plus this will give, um, give us the ability to try and work with the property owner to fix their violations. All right, so you've got habitable space. We get that permitted. No, you can't have nine fixtures in here. So pick the three that you wanna stick with and then we'll permit that.
So if you have a violation to dismantle the kitchen, which means you gotta pull out the rain drain cooktop.
So now what I do.
Do they have to pull the wiring out?
Well, we haven't had anybody pull the wiring. We've had them pull the breaker out of the panel.
That doesn't do much.
We've had them replace the blank space with a thirty-inch cabinet with a countertop or butcher block, something. But again, they just, it comes right back out. I've done the same property twice in Verso Ranch. By with different owners with a casita, same thing, twice.
I was on the electrical board in Marion County and we finally had to, had to go through legislation to have it changed. But when they, when they had a violation and had dismantled the kitchen, they had to pull the wiring, clear out the panel and out of the wall. Because all they did is put the cabinet in. And you leave. At least to make it be inconvenient for them. But, but Canada didn't require them to do that, pull the wire out.
What, but you would, you wanna change or you just don't like it the way it's?
There, there's gonna be holes, like, like they're saying, like, I can't think of them, right? But this is what I could think of. And then have, have we put this definition there? People will find holes and ways to get around this. Um, and then there's always gonna be the ones after we leave that do something else.
That's a great improvement.
Yeah, it is.
And, and even with this language, I imagine if we get this in place, we'll, we'll go for a year or two and we'll see where the holes are and then we can come back and we could tweak this maybe or, or find some other way to refine it. Regardless of how good this language is, we're still gonna need to work on our internal, internal processes between planning and building to make sure, we need to find some way, um, to make sure that, that what gets approved of planning is, um, is the same thing that goes through building and, and we're able to talk there. Uh, but like I said, I think this is an incremental improvement that, um, will address certain things and will make things, uh, better overall. But I don't think this is, uh, a silver bullet that makes this problem go away forever.
Would you wanna add something in that top one designated for occupancy where you're talking about, like Katie mentioned about? The engineering, uh, permit or are they structural? Is that, is that, maybe I misunderstood. They have to go back and have an engineer look at it.
It was, it was designed as a shed. It doesn't have the same.
So would you wanna add anything like that in that?
So, so this is for use, if I understand correctly, this is for plan. And then the building code, they've already addressed that.
I got you.
This kind of brings the planning code more in line with the Oregon residential structural, especially code. And so. Like I said, it's an improvement. And so, um, if you guys don't have any other tweaks, then, then we can kinda keep this language and bring this back with the bigger December code update as well. Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Appreciate your willingness to, you know, dive into this and help us try to come up with, at least as, as close a fix as we can.
Well, I, I mean, you've got it. You've kept it small. It's pretty easy to understand. It's not this whole long.
That's why I added the other jurisdictions. There, there's, there's, cause a lot of those were ten, twenty pages long trying to, trying to get to this. And so this was as, as simple and clean, um, as I could think of, um.
I spent three hours tearing this apart, trying to rewrite it, fix it, and I came back. I couldn't improve upon what we're looking at right now.
I mean, I would imagine that there, there's not a whole lot harder when you have to go out and try to push compliance and you, you're kinda left with a bunch of arbitrary or kinda up in the air. It, it just makes you, it just makes you work harder. So I, yeah.
True.
And that's a big part of this too, is staff time. We have, we have jobs to do. We have a lot of tasks we need to do and it's just kept coming up over and over again. Having to get all the heads together, having to talk about it. And it was, uh, a significant waste of resources.
Gotcha.
I wanna make sure we're streamlined and efficient in what we're doing, um, and so that's, that's a big reason for this.
Makes sense.
Exceptions equal a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a grandfather law on any of this stuff from when you buy a home that say, no, it doesn't? It was put in in the forties and they didn't get a permit for it or there's no permit for it.
I don't even think we can use that word anymore.
I don't either. It's like in real estate, you say primary bedroom area. Dead and primary back.
Cause there's always a secondary.
I think it goes back further than that.
That's what I got for, uh, work session.
That's all?
That's it?
That's it.
But there was, wasn't there something else? Or was there updates?
No updates, um. It's hard when we, when we meet every week, uh, to give you guys new updates. And so I, I don't know how much we have to update you on that that wasn't around last week. I can share that, um, this morning at work session, the board commissioners approved uh, and signed the letter of support for the G L C D technical assistance grant for our whole file update. And so it was good to check that box. We should know, uh, by the end of the year whether or not we get the money for that. But I don't think we have any other updates that are new since last week. I don't know. Hannah, can you think of anything?
I think the, the update that you did at work session is the same one we did last week.
Yeah, yeah. Do you have any other updates, Katie?
No.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Laquita, you're not here, so, but I, you can still.
I'm here. I'm here in spirit.
You are.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? Of those in favor? Thanks, Laquita.
Bye.